I will read this short introduction. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will be conducted remotely. Parties interested in addressing the board during the public hearings are asked to email Confidential Secretary Juana J. Carroll at L Carroll, that's L C A R R O L L, at W Bridgewater dot com for instructions on joining the remote meeting. Additional public comments regarding non-public hearing agenda items will be recognized at the discretion of the chairman. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. Additionally, a recording of the meeting will be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Video On Demand website at H T P P S colon slash slash W B hyphen cam dot org slash V O D slash. I think I read all that correctly. Okay. So first, in our presence, we have Eldon Marrera and Madeline Marrera. We asked Eldon to join us tonight so that we can recognize his many years of service and also show a few things we have done in your honor. Eldon, first of all, we want you to know that we renamed Board of Selectmen Room in your honor. It's now known as the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room.
Very nice.
Which you've spent a lot of time in here over the years. That is recognition of you. Also, we have a great picture of you up here. And we have this to read to you, Eldon, proclamation. And there've been several things I've been, had the privilege of doing since being elected as selectman, attending Veterans Parade, just to name a few. But I think this is one of those that gives me the greatest honor. So this is a proclamation of the Board of Selectmen, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Whereas Eldon Francis Marrera's name first appeared as a recorded birth in the West Bridgewater Annual Town Report of 1931, and whereas Eldon F. Marrera has been a lifelong, I'm sorry, a lifelong resident of West Bridgewater, and whereas Eldon F. Marrera served on the Finance Committee for eight years, from 1973 to 1981, and whereas Eldon F. Marrera was first elected to the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen on April 8, 1981, a post he held for 39 consecutive years, earning a total of 9,307 votes in his favor, pointing himself the People Selectmen. And whereas Eldon F. Marrera is the longest-serving selectman in the town's history, and whereas Eldon F. Marrera has since worked with countless boards, committees, and commissions to give West Bridgewater and its residents a voice on the local, county, and state levels. And whereas the town of West Bridgewater, its employees, and the Board of Selectmen do heartily express our sincere appreciation to Eldon F. Marrera for his unwavering devotion into Korea in public service, his many contributions towards the betterment of the town, and for his continued willingness to help. Therefore, be it resolved, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby declare the second-floor Town Hall Meeting Room the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room. In honor of West Bridgewater's longest-serving selectman, Eldon Francis Marrera, we extend to him our deepest appreciation for all of his dedicated work and wish him well in all of his future endeavors. In witness whereof, we have hereon too set our hands and cause the great seal of the town of West Bridgewater to be affixed this third day of February 2021, the Board of Selectmen, Denise Surrays, Anthony Kinahan, and Meredith Anderson.
Thank you very, very much. It's a great honor to accept this. All along there, my wife and family, I really appreciate what they've done because I wasn't home too much on holidays and there was always something going on. And with their support, I continued to go. I only missed one meeting, I think I was on the way to the hospital or something, all the years that I've been there. So I've been pretty dedicated and of course, in my office, you have Lana and it's just unbelievable and the architect all behind this stuff, this guy over here, David Gagnon, I really appreciate because anything that we had to move, between the office staff and the Board of Selectmen, we managed to move. I think we pointed this, I know we have the town in the right direction because we came a long way when I started. Basically, there was nothing really developed and it took, you know, the office staff and the whole fight of us to get together and did what we did and we come out with, how much, David, Dave, and John, Dave, with what, three or four million dollars there.
Yeah, we have over three million dollars now.
Yeah, and with Rainy Day Fund, I had a trip to death, that's one of the first things, like Dr. Davis, when he come aboard there, I went to staff at that thing there. But there are many, many things that we accomplished there. When I look back and I see it was high, we were working out of a street guy garage and that's the first thing, we had to, you know, two fire stations and two police stations and then the episode of the roofs, I mean, you know, all the roofs were leaking and the school and then now we got a new high school and all that stuff. And all that was because of great support from the taxpayers who had to put the bill out there. But we stayed in the leadership and continued to move the town and I think that I pointed in the right direction for what it is today and with some of the new ones, like him on, Anthony, Denise, and they helped to continue what we started. And of course, the town is not, we had the old county council and we had many of the things, the roads and everything else, there's still a lot of work to be done out there but I think the right group already is to do it and I say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to mention, also joining us, we have Tricia, David, and Bobby, your sons.
Yeah.
And grandchildren, Kaitlyn and Justin, joining us too.
Eldon, I'd really like to thank you, I mean, I came here five years ago now when I was 26, really not knowing where to go, what direction to go in, and without your mentorship and help, I really wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we've been able to accomplish together. I thank you for that.
Well, I know, you know, a lot of things agree, this degree, but I think the thing is we continue to move, move ahead and keep pushing and that, I think that's the, we have, you know, we've accomplished a lot from the time the future went on, I believe. And Denise comes, she was a big goose, I mean, I was also too because we continued to pace and, you know, the street lights, any of that stuff, even, even I've been involved with the National Guard there and lighting up the intersections, making it, sort of, visibility of people to drive on the streets. It's, I made a lot of good contacts, I didn't do it all myself, but I meant one thing, what I had in my favor was always through the ex-selectmen, they never really, they could offer more and all of that, but they were constantly, you know, talking to me and, you know, I took their views and moved along because they had been there and what I saw and they saw was the best for the town. And, you know, if we didn't go in the direction that they felt, I certainly hear those, you know, they had open intention, they would call me anytime, you know, to develop that kind of, you know, I wish that maybe at home that I did a little bit more because there's an awful lot of time that was spent outside there of doing the justice for town, but it's really, it put us down and I'm very, very proud of being there for so many years. Was it sitting down on the board and another eight? That'll give me, let's see, yeah, yeah, on the board, it's a long time. You know, because there's a lot out here, but a lot of the things like the reps and the sound of the Old County Plan House, that's the Marilla up there and very close to him, I shared with all the, all the boards up there and we also, the boy down in Plumist, the County Advisory Board, which Denise is now a member, and this Metropolitan's there where, where my board on that committee there, all the way down to Plumist, any highway project there, you know, would have my name and I'd have to sign up. So it was very, very interesting. I not only was on this board, but I got on the other board to try to move the town. I figured that's the best way to do it, to get where the act is and then my board will move whatever we have to move. Hey, it's quite a thing and, you know, and I, I welcome all these new ideas and the new people that come on there and I, even Denise there, there was a lot of things she brought and when we talked it over and all that, and then we went to vote and the vote was pretty, pretty positive. We can just vote, just to vote. We had a basis and that's what we run with. But again, it wouldn't be possible with all the corporations and, you know, and I was just thinking, and while the people that touched me out there, some of them, you know, have been there a long time. And one of the ones that comes to mind when I was thinking today too, and I can mention all the ex-selectmen and all that stuff, you know, but one thing that stands over me right now is the Bill thing. And Bill has been on the zoning board of field and really, really, someday, I hope that he is honored for some, for all of the hours of work that he could spend with this community. He's done an outstanding job there and he's been right on it. And as I was thinking, I reminisced through, like, Bill Turner, who was a big supporter of mine there when he was last, we were discussing the status of this town, you know, it's people like him and the ex, even Mike McDonald, who was one of the oldest selectmen that served with me, and I know it's hard, I would beat out first, I think he served 16 years, you know what I mean, and all of a sudden, I go, why is it 16, man? And then I faced with this today, boy, oh, boy, it's been a long time. But like I was saying, I couldn't do this without help because I needed all the help I could and I got a lot of good help inside to move things. And like I just told you, I met him before, Dave from in the picture here, and he, I called from the architect, he moved him. And I, and, you know, anytime I get out and even when we took him and tried there and the salary was basically way below what's around the town is, and I found out one thing, sometimes if we hire with a low case, not allowed to get it after, because afterwards, I mean, they don't realize what he needs of the community. Because I see it every day. He's there and if you want to verify that, just come by some night there and see what, if you want a long car in the yard, there, there'll be days.
I'd love to be driven by him anytime soon, just this car in the parking lot. Eldon, I think your family, I know Mary wants to say something and maybe some of your family members would like to tell you something. Mary?
I'd like to make sure that I say thank you as well. Eldon, you became a selectman in 1981, that's the same year my family moved into West Bridgewater. So you have always been a selectman as long as I've lived there. And my dream is for my own children to stay in town. So I can only hope that I can do as well as you have. So thank you for inspiring so many, myself included.
Thank you very much.
And how about the Marrera family? Tricia, you look like you're ready to say something. I think you're on mute, though.
I don't know, I was looking at my brothers to see if they wanted to jump in. I wanted to say that Dad absolutely, positively loved representing the town on many different boards and starting with the Finance Committee and other committees and then obviously as a long-serving selectman, and he gave a lot of hours, but I have to say, that was his passion. He absolutely loves the town of West Bridgewater and he just really enjoyed interacting with all of, all the people in town, both through the Town Hall and all the various departments in town. I think he definitely earned the title of the People's Selectmen because he really, you know, he was born here and raised here and he just absolutely loves this town. So, so, you know, Dad, you did a great job and we're really proud of you that you've enjoyed being there and serving the people and we're glad that you had this honor and I can't wait to, at some point, come by when it's time to come in and actually see, see that, see the door and see the picture that's hanging at some point. So good, good for you, we're proud of you.
Well, thank you very much, Tricia. I'm certainly proud of you, I mean, you've done too, you know, I mean, you're there for the family, you represent and I guess everybody wishes they had a lot of like you were. Thank you very much.
It is. David, you have?
Yeah, I'd say congratulations, Dad. I have vivid memories of, right after dinner, you got the iron out, you got your suit jacket and your tie going. So that was a staple in my childhood and I know you, you kept it going for a long, long time. So congratulations, I'm thrilled for you.
Thank you, David.
Anyone else would like to say something? You'd have to just unmute your microphone. Kaitlyn can't stop smiling, your granddaughter, she's so happy for you. That's awesome. David, did you want to say something?
I did, I just want to make sure everybody had an opportunity to speak first.
Okay.
Hi, can I say thank you, Eldon? Kenny?
Kenny Mays.
Hey, how are you? Eldon, I want to thank you for all your continuous support throughout the years for our department. It's been a pleasure working with you and I still look forward to seeing you dunking nose around town. Again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the support you've given our department and good luck with the rest of your family. He was wonderful to us, just to let you guys know, he treated the fire department with respect and always there for us, no matter what, good and bad. We appreciate you for all you do for service and I've been a resident since 1984 and I can't thank you enough for what you've done for this community. Thank you, Eldon.
Yeah, thank you. You know, and I, it's a pleasure there of going because I'm one selectman, just don't sit behind a desk, I come out and see what you're doing, what you need and anything that we talk about, we chat over the fire department and it is what it is today. And I know that you're in retirement and I wish you the best of luck too because you've done, you've done a great job with, what do you got, about 30, 35, 36 years then?
33.
Oh, that was close. Okay.
Yeah.
We appreciate every answer you've done because you made that fine, defined it what it is today. Thank you very much.
Oh, I did it with all your help. Thank you, Eldon.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah, so I want to say thank you. I was appointed eight years ago, you were on the board. I still remember, you're the one who made the motion. I was sitting in the audience and there was three of us and back then you could actually have people in the room and so there was like 40 people and I wasn't sure obviously how the vote was going to go and then you made the motion and I'll never forget that. I'll also never forget my first day that I came to work. It was first thing in the morning, it's 8 o'clock, and at 8:01, the girls in the office said Eldon's on the phone for you. Now, you were the chair at the time.
Right.
So we picked up the phone, if anybody knows Eldon, he always speaks in mid-sentence. So you pick up the phone and he's already talking. So I'm trying to figure out what he's saying, so he's talking and he says, I'm on my way, I've got to see you. I think I already did something wrong. So he comes here, he says, we're going to jump in your car, we jump in, and the first thing he wanted to do was he wanted to show off the town that he loves. We literally drove around for hours and he showed me all the spots in town, and he said, this is great, I'm going to get paid to drive around. But he legitimately showed all the places in town as to where he grew up, show me his house, then he said, this is my homestead, which is the old house, drove around, and then he said, we're going to go get some lunch. And we went to the kitchen and it took me six months before I realized, that's in Brockton. Like, I thought that was spiritual. So, but we had lunch there and then the other thing that I learned from Eldon is legitimately where to eat everywhere in town and brought me to clam bakes whenever he could. So in all honesty, you are a fantastic board member. It always amazes me because I would call him about something and Eldon, I would call you and you always knew what I was talking about. You know, we could, you guys know how much stuff we go over and years later, I could call him and say, hey, do you remember? And he would remember. And so I was always really impressed with everything you said and what you did and your assistance and your help. And being in politics, you know, you always run eventually into someone who may not be the biggest fan and it was great as an employee to know that you always had my back in the back of all the employees here. Like, seriously, that was, that was the best part. So, you know, we, we thank you very much, I thank you a lot and thank you for everything that you did. And if I may, I literally just received a text message, you were talking about ex-selectmen, I just received a text message from Jerry. I don't know if it's clean, I haven't read it yet.
Oh, boy.
But if it's okay.
Who's got the beep machine?
You know, you know Jerry, so we don't know what he's, so here's what he says. Eldon, it was a great pleasure to serve by your side for 12 years as selectman. You're an inspiration to the people of this town. Your years of service and dedication as the People's Selectmen will forever be unmatched. The naming of that meeting room in this historic building is an honor you truly earned. The countless hours and the countless meetings over the years all help shape our community and truly make it the gem of the metro south. Due to COVID restrictions, I cannot be there to celebrate with you. However, I congratulate you on this honor. I hope to someday be again to serve this great town as selectman in the Eldon meeting, Eldon Marrera Meeting Room. That was good. And the last thing I'll just say is, I remember meeting your wife for the first time when we named the street after you.
Yes, I want to thank Jerry for, for his motion.
It was.
So I didn't know, this honor to name this room after me, but I have a street named after me, you know what I mean?
I know you do.
And what's odd about a lot of this name and the recognition there is that after a person passes away, then he's recognized there, but they do it differently.
We didn't want to wave. No, we want you to see all of this.
Yeah, it's very, very nice, you know, and really done a lot good.
And Madeline, I know, and to your family too, I'm sure there were many sacrifices you had to make because of your commitment to the town of West Bridgewater.
It was like, you know, like, I had a beach place there, but it seems that I was up here more because every single holiday, we had to be here. There was days of singing at the park or November 11th and all those things, I mean, we have to be there. Well, you know, you've got a place in our country there and you say, well, so this is what happened, but I didn't expect to come in here today and see David with a new hairdo. So it is. So it's New West Bridgewater.
It is.
It's gone, right?
But I mean, I don't, I don't know if there's enough words to express our gratitude to you, to you for all of your years of service and everything you've done for this town, to your family for, you know, giving up some of those special events so he could do everything he did. He's an amazing man. From the day I met you, you were a good friend that day and you're a good friend now and I'm grateful to have known you and have worked with you on the board.
Well, we always knew that West Bridgewater was, it was one of the most important things to him, West Bridgewater, the people of West Bridgewater, you know, you just couldn't do enough of them. So, and I admire him for that very much, I really do, and the kids do too, you know. And I, I think one of the things is, is the girls that you worked with and the people in the office that did all the work when you were here, you know, thank them for that.
Well, definitely because they're the ones that carried this thing for where it is. If it wasn't our office staff, it's been a good one, over the years and it gets better the thing. I think it's the best right now, really, really, you know, it's very, very talented and the people that come and approach you will get back to me and, you know, no matter how small or little or whatever, if it's a problem, they get right into it and they go, and we're very, very fortunate to have Rob and Steph.
Yeah, it was great working with you. I feel like an honorary grandchild. I look forward to all of our morning phone calls, catching up on things and, you know, I know there's good things to come for you.
Well, it's a deal, I still get the agenda, I'm still interested, I, you know, I want to know what you're doing and if I can help in any, any manner, I, you know.
I will call you.
You know, I will help. One of the things that I've developed, I mean, I meet people every day, they think I'm so there and if I have a connection or I can do something, I'll do it. Maybe it just takes a phone call or something like that to help somebody out there and makes it, and I've got a lot, I've got a lot of respect and the state and everything else and all of that thing. Like I said before, it really gets nitty-gritty sometimes, if I had a car wash, then I would do it, you know?
No doubt you would. Eldon, I want to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting this together and I know, I know you've been wanting to do it and you wanted to do it in Fresno and then things really got rocky with viruses and everything else and it's, trying to keep things going, it's unbelievable, you know?
And if you want to stay and listen to us go through our business. And if you want to stay and listen to us go through our business.
Thank you, Anthony, I'll be seeing you, the talking here and whatever.
Um, should we jump to six-thirty to open the meeting, or?
Yep, I was going to ask, is, is that Kelly Laramie is with us. Kelly, um, our, we have a six-thirty public hearing. Do you mind if we do that first? It should only take a minute. Jump to Johnson Management, that's okay with you?
Sure, that's fine. Um, I just, I'm cutting out, some of the audio is cutting out, so I'll, I'll just try to keep recording.
Okay, thank you.
I'm having trouble here. I'm, I'm having a hearing, thanks to. If you can hear me. Pursuant to chapter one thirty-eight and chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Laws. David, can you hear me? I can't hear you guys.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, did you miss, couldn't hear me for the whole thing? All right, I'll start again. Okay, Town of West Bridgewater Public Hearing of Board of Selectmen pursuant to chapter one thirty-eight and chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Laws. A public hearing will be conducted remotely on Wednesday, February third, two thousand twenty-one, at six-thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall sixty-five North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, on the application for a new beer and wine on-premise liquor license for G H O P L L C D B A, Gigi's House of Pizza, four ninety-nine West Center Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. Interested parties are asked to email Confidential Secretary Lorna J. Carroll at L C A R R O L L at W Bridgewater dot com for instructions on joining the remote meeting to address the board during the public hearing. Board of Selectmen Denise raised, Chairman. We need an, uh, a motion to open the meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. Second, all those in favor, roll call, vote.
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Okay, David, do you want to start us off on this?
Sure, so, um, so you may recall that a, about a month ago or so, is that Gigi, who is with us here, uh, she has taken the old Bloom's Pizza and converted it now into her, Gigi's House of Pizza. At that time, we awarded her, or with a common BIC license, so she could open. And since then, she has determined that she would also like to have a beer and wine license. We do have one available. Um, we have done our background checks, everything checks out, there is no objections or concerns. And so it's before the board, if you have any questions for her, and I would ask you for a vote in the affirmative to award a beer and wine license to her.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the license as presented.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. You're doing well, Gigi, you're very popular on Facebook, I see.
Very popular.
Oh, she's muted. Oh, there you go.
Am I muted?
Now you're.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say, I am like overwhelmed at the response that I've gotten from the town of West Bridgewater, the surrounding people that live around here. Everyone that has come in has been so unbelievably nice, so understanding. It's been, I didn't expect to open and be like so busy, and everyone is just like coming out, showing support. I'm enjoying like meeting all these new people, people that I already know. So, I mean, it's just been so awesome. I'm super happy. Um, and so I just want to be able to offer like a, a beer with your pizza. I, I kind of, I think that that kind of goes together. Um, and so I'm excited to take the next step, uh, forward and just keep it going, you know? So I just want to say thank you so much to everyone, people who have come in and tried it. If you haven't, come see me, because, um, I just want to give you guys the best food and a good experience, so.
Well, we came to West Bridgewater, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I really, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public, public hearing now?
So moved.
Anderson?
All those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll move back to our six-twenty application to change DBA name for Johnson Golf Management Incorporated. There was a clerical error on the agenda, it's LLC, it should be Inc. Um, DBA Riverbend Golf Course located at two fifty East Center Street. David?
Yeah, so, um, as we know, the town owns the golf course, but we turned everyday management over to Johnson Golf Management. They have legitimately done an absolutely excellent job. Every promise that they have made, they have fulfilled. The course looks so much better. Even people in town who at one time were concerned about the town purchasing it, and have been there, I've received positive feedback from them. Um, they looked, they've always had a liquor license. Uh, the liquor license provided to them was Riverbend, um, Riverbend Golf Course, and so they have retained that name on the license. At this point, all they're looking to do is just change the name from Riverbend to what their actual name is, which is Johnson Golf Management Inc. Again, there is no objections to issues. They've certainly been a very good license holder. And so as a result, I would look for an affirmative vote from the board to make that change of ownership name.
Any questions? No? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Right, all those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kel, uh, that was Kelly, right? That was here with us?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Of course. Thank you, David, for the kind words, and, um, we're happy to be there as always. Happy to see the place improve.
Business is good?
Yes, yeah. Luckily, you know, in a pandemic, golf is something people can do. And we're happy to provide that and, and have more people come. We're happy with that, yeah, so things are good.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, at this point, we're going to move forward, and it's just about six forty-five, so we can start our budget hearings, David?
Yes, we can. So first and honorable docket, I believe I see his name is in here, Scott Holder. Scott is the collector. He has four budgets for you, which is his budget, along with the debt that, um, that he, his department manages as well. And I really would like to take this opportunity and say Scott does a really nice job. Um, our bond rating has continued to increase under his tutelage. And, as you know, last time, he came before you with a repurpose bond that we got less than a one percent interest rate. So he's done a very, very good job of paying attention to the markets and making sure that wherever we can save money, that we do. And so without further ado, Scott, you're up.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Uh, so first budget under me tonight is the Treasurer Collector Budget, which is up on the screen right now. Um, I can just go over the very few changes that do exist out there. Uh, the first one is fifty-one twelve, the Fiscal Clerk. That's Tori's position. This is just reflecting when she went up a step last year. Um, this is a whole year of her new step, instead of doing the half year that we had last year. The Delinquent Tax Collector, fifty-one nineteen, is Jean's position. Uh, this is going to be her eighteenth year, which is moving her up to the highest step, step eight. So that's that three percent raise. And the only other thing I'm asking for is a hundred dollar increase on fifty-two forty-one, which is the postal meter. Uh, there's a new contract that I just signed, and it's about nine or ten dollars a month more, so a hundred dollars per month for the year should cover that.
Um, Scott, is, um, on the increases for the salaries, are those just step increases, or is there also something in reference to, um, a request for reclassification?
I haven't put in the request for reclassification yet. That is included in this number. Um, I think the, the increase is so small, because I think I had put it in last year, and I didn't do it yet.
All right, so, because the selectmen have to take that vote, um, so my, what my, the spirit of my question is, this budget reflects not just a step increase, but also a request for classification as well, is that correct?
On Tori's position, yes.
All right, thank you.
What, what line is that?
Fifty-one twelve.
So that's both a step and a, um, reclass. So at, at this point in the budget season, we're really not getting into a lot of detailed discussion unless anyone wants to, unless there's something that really stands out. I think the objective is to go through these and pass them on to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, correct. You know, we've asked for a level-funded budget.
Mm-hmm.
And my, my, I vocalize this to the board and to the Finance Committee, is that if a department really comes in with a level-funded budget, that budget was already approved at town meeting last year. So the town has already said, "We're going to fund this department at this request."
Mm-hmm.
So if they really fulfill the requirements and the wishes of the board, and your board, that they're going to come in at just level-funded, and the only change is a contractual requirement, then, yeah, you're more than welcome to ask questions, but there really isn't a lot of questions to ask, because we've already litigated embedded these budgets.
Okay, okay, so the, the only that stands out is a reclassification of a job, because that wasn't part of level funding.
That is true.
Um, but at this point, we're passing the, you know, it's a vote to pass them on to the Finance Committee. There's still plenty of time for further discussion. Um, so if there's a, um, a motion to take a vote.
Uh, can we wait until and just do them all at once?
Do them all at once? Good idea. Okay, so Scott, what's your next budget?
Uh, next budget is seventy-one hundred, the retirement of debt. This is almost exactly level-funded last year. We didn't pay off, um, any loans in full yet. So the only increase is a small thirty-eight dollar increase. It's just a variance in the year-to-year, uh, debt payment. And then after that is the interest on the long-term debt, seventy-five-ten. There's a decrease in this. The decrease in fifty-nine oh two is a combination of a lower interest payment from year to year, combined with the refunding that we just went through. So that's forty thousand dollars lower, and then the other three lines have smaller decreases, and that's just a reflection of the, the lowering interest rate as we go on. And the final debt category is interest on short-term debt, seventy-five-twenty. Uh, that's just a flat fifty thousand, and that covers the interest on the bands. And that fluctuates year to year. Right now, it's low, but the, the fifty thousand generally always covers it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass budgets fourteen fifty, seventy-one hundred, seventy-five-ten, seventy-five-twenty to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? No?
Okay.
Um, all those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Okay, Scott, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
It's a little early. Um, Kenny, budget was at seven. I don't know if he planned to have anyone else with him. Can we proceed with going?
You can. It's not a public hearing, so, you know, all the time to assume that the yes.
Okay.
I'm ready to go. Rip and are ready to go, my last time.
Kenny, the floor is all yours.
All right, well, mine's, uh, real, real simple. Um, as a request, I did the best at level funding as possible, but we did have contractual, some contractual changes. Um, if you go down to the top, you see fifty-one fifteen permanent salaries. I had six guys moving up in step increases, um, which accounted for about twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, the next change would be on those step increases, uh, we had three guys move up an extra week's vacation, and one with an extra day, so it was three weeks and one day extra vacation. By covering those shifts is eight thousand dollars. Uh, fifty-one ninety was allowances stipends that I, I moved actually into salaries. Uh, I took that out of that line, so basically kind of took it out, because it got built, uh, a stipend got built into a salary for contractual reasons. The rest of the line, I kept level-funded as, uh, the best we can, and work with what we have, because I know difficult times for all. That's about, uh, that's all the changes. I got about one point two seven percent increase overall.
Thanks, Kenny. I'll make a motion to pass the fire budget to the Finance Committee.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Kenny, appreciate all of your efforts, and please thank the staff. Um, we appreciate everything they do, and in maintaining this as a level-funded budget.
Okay.
David, uh, David wants.
And I just want to say one thing, this here is the Fire Chief's last budget. During April, um, he has already told me that although it would be nice to go down to Carlton and play golf every day, he prefers snow and stay off.
Not after my last weekend, I'll tell you that.
But, um, but in all honesty, Chief, thank you very much for everything, and Denise is entirely correct. This has been a tough year on you and your department. And, uh, thank you for everything that your, your staff does.
Uh, it's been a privilege for dedicating my thirty-three years here. It's been a wonderful ride. And well done. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, um, seven fifteen budget hearing. We have Conservation Committee and Open Space Committee, I think John Delano. Are you doing both of these, John? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you mind if we start with you then? It's a little early, but.
I'm here.
Okay, great. Floor is yours.
All right, uh, for Conservation, uh, we have level-funded, uh, our budget, same as last year. Um, we don't anticipate any problems being able to provide the necessary services.
Yeah.
All right.
That's, uh, seventeen. Did you, okay, so they're both level-funded, both seventeen-ten and seventeen-fifteen?
Yes, the open space is the same as last year.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
No questions.
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Oh, uh, make a motion that we hand this over to the Finance Committee.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. John, we appreciate everything you do. We know there's constantly changing regulation in your area, and you're right, you and your team are right on top of it. Thank you.
I'd like to also thank the, the Selectmen and the administration for, um, making a good work environment, and I enjoy doing it, so thank you.
We're glad to have you here, John. Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, budget, um, seven-thirty budgets, wastewater treatment facilities, and Board of Health.
Yeah, so that'll be Chairman John Cruz. I just texted him and let him know that we were ahead of schedule, so.
Okay.
He said he was going to log on, so we don't see him yet.
No, I also sent him an email, but I haven't heard.
Okay, who has seven forty-five?
I guess I do it.
Oh, well done. David, how would you like the floor to be yours?
Well, thank you. So I will handle the seven forty-five budgets. I do this every year, because they have the smaller budgets. Um, Agricultural Commission is level-funded at six hundred year-over-year. Lawn Space Crisis Center is level-funded year-over-year at twenty-seven fifty. Rockton Area Arc is level-funded at two hundred and fifty dollars. Old Colony Hospice Care is level-funded at two thousand. And Plymouth County Extension Services is level-funded at two hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we pass these to the Finance Committee for further review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, any questions, concerns? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, how about if we move on to accept the meeting minutes of January sixth for review?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Can I hear you, yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. I think we're still waiting for John, correct? Okay, do you think we can squeeze in, discuss and vote on extending the transfer sticker deadline to March first?
I think so.
Okay. We know how Anthony feels about that. Mary, there is a motion on the floor.
Um, I, I did have a question. My question was, um, where we were in sales compared to last year?
Yep, so, um, so as of today, we have sold fifteen-hundred-and-fifty-five stickers. We normally sell about nineteen-hundred to two thousand. So we have sold about seventy-five percent of them. And again, the thought process on this is that we normally give a grace period until February first. But again, the board has attempted on where they can to be as flexible to residents with everything going on. We thought it might be wise to give everybody one additional month as a grace period. So right now we're at seventy-five percent sold, nerd.
Okay, so there's still twenty-five percent of tickle holders that, that need this. So yeah, I'm, uh, Anderson, yes? Is that what you're asking me?
A motion? So we were looking for a second? Okay. Alright, um, all those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Okay, and I think we can move back now. I see John Cruz with a Fourth of July background.
It's festive. Good morning, good evening, everyone.
I'm glad it's not good morning.
I know. It's been a long day. Well, um, uh, is it official now? Am I on, is my time?
You are, you are live streaming right now, John. Everything you say is live for the whole town.
Well, that's the second time I've livestreamed today. I had my plumbing board meeting here in the, in the barn today as well, zooming, so. It's been two for two today. Well, I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to, um, maybe be the first one in front of your board tonight for my, uh, my line items, for my budgets for border health and wastewater treatment facilities. I'm John Cruz. I'm the chairman of the border health. And I'm here tonight just to basically tell you what the request is, is that everything is the same, um, funding from last year. So obviously there are no increases. That's pretty much where we're at.
Anyone have any questions for John or concerns?
The only thing I want to say is, I just want to say thank you to John and his department. Again, this has been a tough year. And we only have one health agent with one secretary and I'll go over the numbers later on. You know, we've had over seven hundred COVID cases in town. All of those seven hundred cases had to be close contact tracing between John and his staff, not part-time nurses. That was a lot of work. On top of the fact, they still have more health work to actually do. You know, that other work doesn't go away. So they've done a really, really good job. Rob Casper's been excellent. Again, I've got good news later on in the, in the program and reference to where we are with COVID and what the direction we're going in. But they've done excellent. I just want to say thank you to John. Again, you mentioned it earlier. Wherever he goes, the party goes. That's why the private works are there. In all seriousness, the board of health has really done a fantastic job for this town. And I just want to say thank you to John and please to, the same to your staff. I work with them every day. I meet with Rob all the time. And he has rolled out a lot on his plate. He's done a fantastic job.
So John, I think we as a board would echo everything David said. I know what your staff is under every day with everything changing. I mean, it changes day by day. It changes hour by hour. With as far as the requirements are, what the legislature is, it's a lot to keep up with. And also the phone calls from the community, uh, that, the residents that are concerned and hopeful for whether it's a test or a vaccine. And we know you're all working, um, very diligently and, and very hard. And, and then to come in very easily with a level funded budget because you, you know, your heart is in this town. So thank you. Please extend our gratitude to the staff and thank you as well.
I will do that. And thank you guys. We, we appreciate the support. It's, it's good that we can all work together and work for the benefits of everybody in, in the town of West Bridgewater. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I mean, everyone's coming in, right? I'm not sure this has ever happened before. Where? If it hasn't, and every, this, you really, you have to admire all these departments and boards. And, and the staff, all caring about the community that, you know, there's no arguments about, we want this, we want that. We, they recognize that. The town has sacrificed. It's pretty amazing.
I agree. Do we capture a vote when we move on to the finance committee?
Alright, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. Sorry to leave you hanging about that vote, John. I forgot about that part.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, we'll move on to communications and reports from boards, commissions and town officials. Do we have any communications to? No? Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action? Uh, no, I would like to bring something up because it just came up today. And it's regarding the yellow water in town. Wayne asked me, and I will post it later on, just to make sure the residents know. He's done some, I don't know if you want to call it realigning or tweaking or whatever the case may be. But his hope is that over the next two days, the system will flush out. And the majority of town will see an improvement in their water. So the majority. I'm, I'm hesitant to say all. Um, I'll post some more information later, but anyways, he wanted to, um, try to get the word out to everyone that's what's happening as of right now. And again, it just came up today. Yeah, I heard from him right before the meeting. Public climate period, um, we did invite the public to then contact Lana during this meeting. Okay, no one's reached out. Town administrators report.
So thank you. So, um, I really should come for weeks. I haven't. It's probably like our fortieth COVID-nineteen update. I will tell you all the numbers are trending in the right direction. This week, again, we captured them week to week from Tuesday to Tuesday. And as of yesterday, we currently have twenty-six active cases in town. That was down from thirty-three the week before. That was down from the mid-forties from a couple of weeks before that. And earlier in January, right after the holidays, we peaked out in the mid to high fifties per week. So we are literally half of what we were at that point. Fortunately, again, still no deaths, but obviously people have been sick, but you know, we're doing the contact tracing. And we now know that as we move further away from the holidays, it looks like the case count will continue to go down. So that's all good news and that's all positive. Couple of other things that are pretty positive is that the state now is starting to receive its shipment over the past week of vaccines. Um, I'm on a weekly call with the Department of Public Health and Lieutenant Governor. They went over what their rollout is last week and we know that the governor also had his state of the state address last Tuesday evening. So they are hoping based on their current allotment is to be able to administer about a hundred and thirty thousand doses of vaccine per week. That's good. We have six point six million people. And the first phase at this point of phase two is going to be those that are seventy-five and over. And after we move through the people that are seventy-five and over, it will be sixty-five and over. And then people with two comorbidities and so forth and so on. The state has done a really good job. They've set up sites throughout the entire state. And they can actually have the capacity to do three hundred and five thousand doses per week. So if they can get the doses from the pharmaceutical companies coming through the federal government, we, they can actually administer three hundred thousand. So again, it's been a little bit frustrating. Um, Rob Casper, our health agent and I, he sat on the odd, uh, sat on the computer earlier today. And we tested it and a half an hour later, we still could not register for a site. We literally tried as if we were a seventy-five-year-old couple. And we just, we couldn't get through it. And you know, we're pretty tech savvy. We know what we're doing. So for the people out there that are over seventy-five or over sixty-five, we, obviously there's not much we can do because we don't control the site. But we are paying attention and we're following and we understand your frustration. Because if we can't figure out the system to get through it in a half an hour, get to make an appointment, then obviously there's a lot of seniors out there who are going to share that same philosophy. I can tell you, some seniors in this town have already been vaccinated with Gillette. So that is a positive. Some of that is starting to get through the pipeline. On a local level, we received also news, um, that our fire department has done all the right things. I want to give out a shout out. Kenny May is chief, but especially deputy chief Lincoln Tipo. He's done an excellent job on this. He did all the right things. And he has gotten the town of West Bridgewater, uh, West Bridgewater registered as a site that can receive vaccines and also be able to administer them to the public as well. We have already applied for our first allotment. Now, it may be as little as a hundred and maybe as high as a thousand per week. We have no idea. We won't know. There's a revolving door on this. But we are targeting the week of the fifteenth to be able to start running a vaccination clinic in town. We do not know how many. We have a process in place. The council on aging has been instrumentally involved. Again, Marilyn Mather and her staff, they are feeling lots of phone calls, doing everything they can to help people on the website. And then also helping us to be able to set up that facility as to where our vaccination clinic will be. So to anybody that's listening to this, please, 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 still try to use the state website. They are going to have more capacity and more immediate capacity than we will at the town level. And if you need assistance navigating the website, please contact the council on aging. Because the council on aging has people there that are prepared and ready to try to help you. In the meantime, we're going to take the next step as well. We're not going to just rely on the state. We're going to go ahead, go forward and, um, we've already applied for doses. We had told that it takes about a week or so to receive answers and then we receive them in the following couple of days to a week. So we will start a registration process to do that. We're fortunate in this town. The board of selectmen have shown great leadership in making sure that every year when we can afford to do it, is that you guys expand the senior tax workoff program. You just did that at your last meeting. We went from the potential of thirty-six participants to forty-one. And those people, they take advantage of the program because they work in town and get tax reduction. In this past year, they couldn't do a lot of work because a lot of places were closed. But we got them covered this year. We're going to put them to work at the council on aging and they're going to answer the phone calls and help people and reach back out to all seniors in order to be able to make those appointments. So we've got a pretty good process and system in place. We're also going to be able to identify first dose versus second dose. And again, that will all be administered from Rob Casper as our board of health agent. So please, as we push this information out, we will put it on our website. We will do it on our Facebook page. We will place it on the hub. And we will also do a robo-call through the council on aging, which right now we have about eighteen hundred people on that line. In addition to that, we'll also push it out to the newsletter. But some people still are not going to get that information. We understand that. So if anybody's listening and you have a relative or a friend, you know someone, as we start to push that information out, please contact whoever those people might be. We also know that we have an elderly housing complex in town in Esther Drive. And if enough of those people, because we will solicit their input, if enough of those people, um, agree on the vaccine, because again, it's still voluntary, we have also set up a system where we will actually do a mobile site and we will drive to Esther Drive and we will do it there. They are a high concentration of seniors and therefore we believe we can do that. In addition to that, as we solicit people in town, we also have our shuttle bus through the council on aging. And if there are people that are unable to drive, we are going to have the ability to be able to go out and pick them up. Again, we're going to ask everybody for patience because that van normally can hold eleven to twelve people. But because of close proximities, I can only put two or three on it. So we're good, that shuttle bus may, you know, end up doing a lot of routes. So again, we're going to ask people for some patience. But I want people to understand a couple of items. One, the town is doing everything we can to do to help. If you want, please use the state site. If we can help you, we will. If you, once we get the actual numbers for vaccine, we're going to push that information out. Please, we will contact you or contact the council on aging. We'll get you set up. There are fifteen hundred and fifteen people in town that live in West Bridgewater that are sixty-five and over. And those are people that we'll be focusing on first. After we move through that phase, we will then move to the second phase of phase two. Does anyone have any questions about that?
No, I, I think the only thing I wanted to say is that there was a lot of anxiety in town, in town about, you know, what was town hall doing? What was the border health doing? Other towns might be moving faster on this than we were, but it, it's hard to say anything until you have all the moving parts worked out and get confirmation what we can do. And then make plans to not only do it, but do it right. Certainly could have tried to rush it faster, but that doesn't mean it would have been done the right way and properly. So we appreciate everything you and the board of health and the staff at town hall have been working on this and have accomplished.
Yeah, thank you. I can tell you this. We, um, we, the, the, the system was turned on at eight o'clock on Monday morning for us to order. And the deputy told me that eight oh-one, he was already pushing seven. So we were on it as fast as we possibly could do it. So that's all good news on, um, on that, on COVID-nineteen and the vaccination process. Next is the governor's local aid budget. So far, these numbers look really promising. The governor has proposed a budget. Excuse me, and out of that budget, he expects, now for the county of West Bridgewater, is we would receive an increase of about four hundred thousand dollars in locally. If that comes to fruition, that's fantastic because our revenues at the local level are certainly low. I will tell you, I am concerned about this initial budget. The governor's job is to present a balanced budget to the legislature, who then has to, they go through their process. In his budget, he relies on taking out about one point six billion dollars out of the rainy day stabilization fund. They took out a little over a billion the previous year, last year to shore up a hole. And they only had about three and a half to four billion at that time. So the legislature is going to have to agree that they're going to almost drain that down to almost nothing. And if COVID-nineteen unfortunately doesn't, you know, we're hoping for the vaccines to work, but we know that there are mutations and variants. If some of this doesn't work as effectively as we all hope, next year may be a tough year as well. So the legislature may not necessarily want to use all of that money from the rainy day stabilization fund. The governor is also proposing, um, gambling to become legal as well, basically sports betting. It's already legal in Rhode Island and it's legal in New Hampshire. And he's counting on hundreds of millions of dollars from that passage of that legislation to help balance the budget. Well, first, it hasn't passed. And second, if we look at marijuana facilities, for example, that legislation passed years ago. And we still have places that are attempting to get permitted. So even if we get legislation this year, that doesn't necessarily mean we may see the revenue come in because there's still going to be regulations for that that have to be brought into place. So I'm not so sure that these numbers will stay, but at least at this point, if they're going to be lowered from whatever is presented, I'd rather them get lowered from a higher number. So again, it's positive news. Um, as I always let you know, um, I signed off on whatever vendors used to need to use parking, uh, town hall facilities. And the Girl Scouts will be doing so in February here at the town hall. And another good piece of good news is that about six weeks ago, I came to you and I delivered at that time bad news that we had applied for a grant to build a sidewalk on River Street from War Memorial Park all the way down to the center of town. It was denied. And about four weeks ago, I came to you and I said, we're going to reapply. We've got approved. So the state is awarding us two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And so we will get cracking on that. The only one caveat is it must be done this year. That's not a bad thing because we want it done. But obviously Chris Eningtelli has done a really nice job with writing grants with our pseudo on-staff engineer Jim Noyes. They've done a really good job and we have received this grant. So I think that that's all really good news. And before I get to the new video on demand, as I mentioned, DTW, I want to say thank you to Chris and to Shawnee. You're saying, you know, we've had a couple of storms now and these have been strange storms. Um, it is one thing, they would rather get hit with a fifteen-inch snowstorm that falls in five hours. And these have been longer duration storms. They're working a lot of hours. The previous week we got four inches, but they logged twenty hours because it just never ended. And again, I've always said this is that I'm extremely impressed. Sean runs that crew out in the field. Christie's in the office to do the administrative work for when people call. And Sean does a really, really good job of pushing all the guys in the field to really have the best roads in the area. I sincerely mean that. You leave the West Bridgewater, you drive to a neighboring town. I don't need a marker. I know as soon as I hit a patch of snow in another town when I leave the town. So they did a really nice job and I just want to give a shout out to them for all the work they do. Um, and the last thing is, is that there's, um, the cable company has been on and Ben, did you want to speak on this or would you like me to speak? Okay, so, um, so Ben sent us an email. There's going to be a change as to what we do with these presentations going forward for residential access. So Ben, you're up.
No? No? Thank you, Ben. Appreciate everything you do. Okay. So, Les, does anyone have anything else, Meredith or Anthony? No? Okay. Then, um, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically all non-union, non-union contractual employees under the direction of the board of selectmen. And this would be a roll call vote.
Can I have a yes?
Anderson, yes.
Raised, yeah. So at this point, we are adjourning from open session and going into executive session. Thank you.